Call to order. City Commission meeting of Tuesday, March 5, 2019. Let the record show that Vice President Frederick is absent. First item up is the Order of Business. Mr. Gah, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
No, Mr. President, there are no changes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gah. Any questions for -- or concerns about the Order of Business? Now I'd look for a motion on the Order of Business.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the Order of Business with a second. Any further discussion or questions on the Order of Business? Hearing none, all in favor of the Order of Business as it stands? State aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries on the Order of Business. Consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that commissioners wish Hearing no concerns with the consent agenda, I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion on consent agenda? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries on the consent agenda. We don't have anything in the timetable this evening, so we'll move right into administration. And the first item up is the H.R. Code Amendment, and that will be handled by City Attorney Murtha.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission. This is the second reading and proposed final passage for ordinance number 1670 relating to H.R. Code Amendments. There were no comments received between now and when the first reading occurred at the last meeting, and so these staff would recommend approval and ask that this ordinance be passed.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Murtha. Any questions for Mrs. Murtha on the H.R. Code Amendment? This is ordinance number 1670, and we did have a public hearing?
Yes.
The first reading. Hearing no questions, then I'd look for a motion on 1670.
Mr. President, move to approve second read and final passage of ordinance number 1670.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
The final passage with a second. Any further questions or comments for staff? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries on 1670. Next item up is the Dickinson Hills Development Agreement Amendment, and that'll be handled by City Administrator Gah.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. I'm going to give you a brief overview of a little history, catch us up on some history, and some of the things leading into the amendment, and then City Attorney Murtha will go through the amendment with you. Of course, this is regarding the Dickinson Hills commercial subdivision on the west side of town. I went back and looked at the history on this. There's a lot more history than what I have, having been here just a few months. The initial development was turned in January of 2014. It'll be a little over five years. It would probably go without saying that there's been some bumps in the road. Maybe is this project ever going to happen has been a question. I know I've heard that quite a little bit, but the exciting news is there are four initial leases committed for tenants, that being Hobby Lobby, TJ Maxx, Dollar Tree, and a shoe store known as the Shoe Department Encore. So those would be the four anchor stores. You'll see up on the screen a development, a little draft there. You'll see where the new fairway would be constructed on the west side of the business loop. This, as a staff, we're calling this Phase One. And when we talk about the amendment, we're only talking about amending things on the north side of the new Fairway Street. So as a point there, you'll see those four proposed stores, but you can also see there's a lot of room for development, some stores directly to the north of that, a couple of smaller commercial buildings to the east, and then there's some outlots where some potential development could go, both to the east and then a little bit to the northeast. So this could be quite a development just in Phase One. The developers talk about this as Phase One and multiple smaller pieces, but it's all covered by the initial planned use development. We're in the process now of final things of the road design and the lot amendments, and just some minor little administrative things that several staff members are working with the development team on. But this is good news, and it wasn't easy getting here over a number of years. And one of the things is, we had multiple staff meetings in the last couple of weeks working on this amendment, is the important thing is, is we always hear the citizens say, "We need more shopping, we need more restaurants." This development here could bring a lot of those things and more, so we're really excited. As I told the staff, really the important thing is to get started on the stores. The leases say they have to be opened by January 2, 2020, so that will tell you that they'll be working on those stores and will be working on the road at the same time, and that will occur just about as quick as we can once spring hits. So again, Attorney Murtha is going to go through some things. If you have some questions, there are a couple of representatives, Lisa Bridge and Brian Heimel from the development team, if you have any questions or if you want to ask them at the end if they have any comments, but we'll turn it over to Attorney Murtha.
I just have one question for you. Is spring going to come?
I hope so. Where I come from in Iowa, it's really close.
Okay.
It'll be here any day now.
Seems pretty bleak now. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the Commission, I'll just try to highlight some of the items in this agreement. So this is actually what is being presented before you is an amendment to the original development agreement that was recorded in Stark County in 2015. So it's not a complete rewrite of the original development agreement because that wasn't necessary. What it does do is amend provisions in the original development agreement that relate to this phase, and then add additional provisions within the amendment itself. So the first, Section 1, regulation development, that was just to clarify the extent of the law that was applicable, so there were no major changes there. What were really the changes or the items that you all have been discussing are addressed is under Section 2, under the special conditions. So I'll just note in Subdivision A, under the revised Section 4 of the development agreement, that at this time, I believe owner, the owner intends to pursue different design, or additional, I should say, design specifications than what was approved and codified by ordinance number 1522 originally several years ago. However, in order to move forward, the development agreement was amended to just reflect the fact that they will submit an application for any variation or deviation from the conditions in 1522, so that that could happen coincident with the development progressing, so that those two processes can run alongside each other. Under B, this is where we're talking about the, and this is actually the original development agreement, which would be the traffic control improvements that need to occur at the site. I should refer any questions that you may have on this particular section to City Engineer Kuba, since he is well-versed, far more versed than myself, in what the DOT may require for those traffic control improvements. But essentially, what it indicates is that the owner will be responsible for any temporary traffic control improvements, and that after those are installed, that the city will be supportive of the installation of the permanent improvements. And when such permanent improvements get installed, and in what manner, and when they're needed, will be based on industry standards, and the city would also ask the DOT to review this area for a project improvement because the state or the DOT may contribute some funding for that at that time. And in the event that they don't, the parties agree to come back to the table to discuss future improvements for the traffic control signals in the area. The C is where it discusses the road. So I know this is a highly important issue, so I'll just spend a little bit of time on it, which is the, upon receipt and approval of the infrastructure plans by the city, the city will coordinate with the owner to publicly bid the cost of such infrastructure in a manner compliant with city's responsibilities under North Dakota law. The form of the bid has to be approved by the city, and the city will award the bid for its portion of the infrastructure to a responsible bidder with the lowest responsible bid the city will commit and pay up to, and this would be the $1,376,000 towards the cost of its portion of the Fairway Street infrastructure as set forth in Exhibit 2. I'm just going to pause right there and indicate that I don't believe Mr. Kuba has received those infrastructure plans at this time or as yet. Therefore, one, we can't finalize Exhibit 2 yet because we don't have those plans, and all of that has to be approved by Mr. Kuba to progress. So it's not as though if we were to move forward with the development agreement today, that means the city can immediately go out and bid. There's still a lot of process that needs to take place before that happens, but it speaks to it, and the parties have met and discussed how it's going to proceed. The owner shall then be responsible for and pay any of the remaining costs for installation of the infrastructure above that amount of the $1,376,000, and the owner shall reimburse the city for any costs incurred by the city above that cost commitment within 30 days of demand. Now here, the next parts of this go into the, what security does the city have for this commitment? The owner shall indemnify the city against any loss incurred by the city resulting from their failure to reimburse the city. In addition, within, and kind of to make sure that there is some sort of guarantee at the same time that the city is being committed, or committing itself to progressing with the project, that within 30 days of the award of the bid by the city, the owner will provide the city for a financial security, which can be in a variety of forms, but it's got to be approved by the city for this infrastructure, and that the city can make a claim against the entire amount of this financial security in the event any one of the four stores identified in what will be Exhibit 1 fails to open for business by January 1, 2023. Now that is well past the expected date of these stores opening, so it gives that additional time, because as we all know, developments, even with the best of intentions, why ever, can hit roadblocks, can hit things that take additional time. So this is well beyond that additional time, but if any one of, and of course leases can always be amended as well. Any agreement can be amended. So if at any point one of these stores fail to open, then there is that security which the city will have prior to spending money on the project. If it doesn't, so you'll have that, and then if it doesn't occur by January 1, 2023, you can make a claim against that. So I'll just pause right there to see if there's any questions about this section.
Any questions?
Moving on to number, or subsection D, this is reflecting the installation of the box culverts. So this is done in two parts, and there is actually, we're separating it out. So the box culverts that are discussed in D, and Mr. Kuba, please correct me if I misstate this, but these would be on the lots that run along where this initial Phase 1 of the development is happening. So it's an area, it's within the area, it's the stuff that people will see as they're coming into the development. Now, the owner has indicated that at this time, they believe they can maintain those culverts in an appropriate manner, that the box culverts don't need to go in right now, but that as soon as these three lots are developed, then that's when the box culverts would be installed in this particular section. Now, again, the city was looking for some security that this would be, that this would be, happen, or installed eventually, that these box culverts would be installed eventually, because as the Commission is aware, there has been some stormwater issues in these box culverts, or in the area that, in the area where these would go into. And so that financial security is addressed in the next several sentences, which indicates that again, if no development has happened or initiated on lots 7, 9, or 10 by January 1, 2023, the same date, that the city can take any action available to it under law to maintain its, as the city has a regulatory responsibility for stormwater drainage in the area, to maintain compliance with federal, state, and local code. And one of those options would be to special assess the property for this infrastructure, which would be the box culvert infrastructure. So then I'll pause at this time, and then just check to see if Mr. Kuba has anything he wants to add about.
I think that's an accurate description. It's maybe hard to see on the map, but, so the three lots in question are the three large lots by the business loop, and when, I believe it's written, when any one of those, one or more is wanting to be developed, then that section of box culvert in front of all three of those lots would be installed.
And in addition, the financial security would be provided at the time that development occurred on any one of those lots?
Correct.
Mr. Kuba, what percentage of the box culverts are already inlaid?
Throwing out a real rough number, half. So from, there's two approaches there. The one on the right-hand side of the exhibit is Fairway Street. The one on the left-hand side is, it's a private access to the north. So from that private access to the north, as it follows along the business loop and the I-94 off-ramp, all the way along the north side of this development, that box culvert is in.
There was substantial work done on there, and that's what I wanted to point out, but...
Back in 2015, yep.
So moving forward, in addition, subsections E and F were actually suggestions that were incorporated and provided by Mr. Kuba relating to maintenance of the stormwater management system, as well as certification or confirmation by a professional engineer with regards to the adequacy of the installation when it would occur. The next is Section 3 of the amendment, but it's modifying Section 5 of the development agreement relating to assurance of infrastructure completion. And this essentially, this was in the original agreement, and it has been modified to reflect the fact that this is going to be done in phases, that what the financial security options are, so most of the changes are occurring in the very bottom, second to last, I should say, second to last paragraph, which details that the owner doesn't have to post financial security for the entire anticipated project, but rather it's done on a face-by-face basis and when that financial security will be released. Now, this is, this is separate and distinct from the financial security that is discussed in the other provisions up under Section 4. Section 13 is an agreement, is again, part of the original development agreement, and it is amending it as opposed to repealing and restating them. The additional language is the underlined language there, which indicates that this agreement will run with the land regardless of any agreement to the contrary between the owner and a subsequent purchaser, so that the responsibility for adherence to the agreement continues on regardless of who owns the property, that the parties will agree to subsequent amendments of the agreement to address subsequent phases of the project, and that any stormwater infrastructure installed by the owner in Exhibit 3, again, which still needs, that exhibit needs to be finalized, that the city can take any action available to it under law, basically repeating, this is again, the stormwater management is referring to additional box culverts that may need to be installed along the property, and that special assessments may occur if this is not developed by January 1, 2025. So again, there's kind of a future date in there to set a goal of when everyone is looking to have this development, at least the stormwater management develop it completed. The section, Roman numeral 6 of the amendment, addresses the stormwater violation penalties of $60,000 and indicates that the check would be due and payable upon signing of the development amendment, or development agreement amendment. And then the remaining provisions are just governing law provisions. I would note again at this time that there's references to Exhibit 1, 2, and 3 in this amendment. Exhibit 1 will likely be an updated version of the site plan that you're seeing here, so which identifies the four stores. We may have an additional page on there that more clearly specifies, you know, these four stores. Exhibits 2 and 3 relate to infrastructure plans, which again, need to still be provided to Mr. Kuba. So staff recommends approval of the amendment to the development agreement contingent on approval of Exhibits 1, 2, and 3 by our city engineer when they are in final form. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or defer any questions to Mr. Gah or Mr. Kuba.
All right.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Trustum?
Ms. Murtha, can you explain the financial security in a little more elaborate terms? As I've said on the Commission, we've never had a similar business deal, so can you just go a little more in depth in that and explain that?
Sure. The, so the development agreements generally will often include a financial security such as a letter of credit or a bond, so it's amount posted by an owner for, to guarantee, to guarantee payment, you know, if something goes wrong. And so the person who can make a claim against it, so the city could make a claim against it, and it's a kind of a guaranteed of payment. In this particular, so that part is an uncommon, the, I should say, unique nature of this development agreement is very specifically assigning a need for financial security to different needs within this phase. So the infrastructure putting in the road, that has a specific dedicated financial security that isn't necessarily related to installation of the infrastructure, but is in fact tied to will the stores that have been promised open? So that will be held by the city, will have to be provided before the road goes into place, and will be held by the city until that date comes and goes, the 2023. So, and it's there, and under the terms of the agreement, then the city is able to make a claim for its total amount if that doesn't happen. The other items, the financial security for the box culverts for 7, 8, 9, and 10, for the initial box culvert installation, the owner will not need to provide financial security for that until the, until development begins to happen on the box culverts. However, that also has a due date, and if development doesn't happen at all, then there is the ability of the city to special assess the property to make those improvements itself. The different types of, different types of available financial security are generally addressed under five, and those are, again, bond, letter of credit, certificate of deposit, various options that can be provided and will be signed off. So that will follow, the signing off and approval of the financial securities for each of these items will follow the normal process that it would be within the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Murtha, or Mr. Gah, or Mr. Kuba?
Comment? Mr. President, just a follow-up to Commissioner Trustum's question. In addition to the guarantee, you know, that the development will come when the road is built, we'll also have, which is typical to our normal capital improvement projects, there'll be a contractor issued performance and payment bond to address quality issues in the construction or completion of the construction as well. So we'll have a bond from the contractor as well, that bids the project, that will also be a party to that contract with the contractor, which is, I don't want to say uncommon, but it's not necessarily been our protocol on past development-led projects. So wherever we're building city infrastructure, we want a contract with that construction company.
Thank you.
When you get the construction bond, can you make copies and put it in our files here?
We certainly can.
I know what's in a construction bond and so on and so on, but I think it'd be beneficial for these people to see the actual bond itself and read through it, and they'd feel better about it. You know, there's been certain cases, we've gone after contractors under their bonds, you know, so it's a good thing to get familiar with.
We have that document along with their insurance at the time that we award the construction contract, so that'll be another agenda item for another day, and we can certainly include that in the back end.
Okay, any other questions, comments for staff? I know we have representatives from the Dickinson Hills Development. They wish to say anything, or just?
Do you have any questions?
Okay, they're here, so we have any questions. Hearing no further comments or questions for staff, I'd look for a motion on this amendment.
Move to approve this amendment.
May I offer, could we make the approval contingent upon the exhibits being approved by the...
Exactly, that's my motion, I'll say.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion contingent upon the approval of the...
Contingency.
The contingency, and with a second. Any further discussion or questions for staff? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries on the amendments. All right, now we'll move on to, we have a fee schedule amendment, and Deputy City Administrator Carlson will be handling that.
Thank you, President Decker, and members of the Commission. After providing staff with the brand-new 2019 budget book, an error was discovered, I'm sure there will be more, but an error was discovered on the fee schedule. The rate increase that was put in under the utility billing heading for water-based rates was put as $25, and it should have been $5, as it was. And then the sewer base rate changed to $25, because that's where we actually have it, as per the comment that was in your packet, and then that was at $1,340. Customers that had been overcharged on their well rate water were refunded, the difference as of January 1, because that's when it went into effect, so we went back and we refunded. The customers that were undercharged on their well sewer rate did not see the increase as of January 1, we made it effective as when we found it as of February billing. So due to that error, the fee schedule, all well accounts were corrected and utility codes were changed as of February 11. So on that part of it, that was what we found. And then we found that the Park District fee had inadvertently been removed, and it should have been in there. There was no changes to it or anything like that. It was just hidden, and it didn't get into the fee schedule, so we're asking for that also to be put back in there, because it is continuous for the fee schedule. So with that, I'm asking for the consideration to approve the fee schedule amendment resolution. Any questions? I would be glad to answer.
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson? And this would be Resolution 092019? Am I correct?
Yes, yes, 092019.
Move to approve Resolution 092019.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions for staff? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum? Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on 09-2019. Next item up is the 2018 budget amendment and encumbrances, and that'll also be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker. With that, you have in your packet, put a memo together with the finance staff, and I want to just go through it, kind of go through it so that it can be explained. What we're asking for in the 2018 budget amendments, anything that was over expended or because there was a project that needed to be moved over or whatever, that's what this is all about, and I'll go through each one of them. 2018 on the urban forestry funding, we have, budget was $90,000 when we started in 17, and what we were looking at was, or excuse me, yeah, 17. What we were looking at was to do a three-year project downtown, and that was to be able to have $30,000 per the year. Well, with weather conditions that were nice this fall and things, the platter Walt was working with this, and we had the lights that were being removed and replaced downtown, we could do some extra, so at the, in the middle of the session here, we said there is us funding, that was what was the reserve, so when you use it, it's done. So with that, we did use a little bit more in the 18 budget, and so we're just moving that from the reserve, and so the 19 budget would be reduced for that amount that was used in 18. So this is what we're asking for in the 18 amendment, for that budget amendment in urban forestry. The next one is encumbrances. Encumbrances are money that is in, been approved in the budget in 18 that was not used during the project due to items that the project couldn't get done in time, or the project started but are continuing into 19. This money was scheduled for that, so then this is what we're using it for. So engineering, there was some contracted labor carrying over some unspent dollars on intended projects that had not been completed. Museum, the streetlights, those streetlights that are coming from downtown are going along our path and up there at the museum, and because we got more lights replaced downtown, we've got those that'd be able to go into the museum. But winter hit, we've got them laying there, we can't do it, so we're asking for that money to be encumbered into this year so we can finish the base and put them up, so that they're there. In the HR and legal budget, there's travel seminars, this is a travel expenditure that was, if they ordered it and got registered in 2018, even though it's a 2019, they got a bigger discount. So with that, they encumbered that money so that they can use it for that travel, and they, they are committed to that travel. Solidways, the cold storage building, this one is that $300,000, we still have not used it, we're just encumbering that money because we haven't decided if we're going to be putting it up there, but to know that that money's there. Wastewater treatment plant, the septic receiving station, carrying over that unspent budget on Phase 1 of the septic receiving station, it just has not been completed. So those are the encumbrances for 2018 that'll go into 19. The 2019 budget, when we went through the 2019 budget process last fall, we were discussing that their fire station 1, Phase 1, in that amount was going to be like $335,000. When we went through the budget and decided what was going to be, we took the whole $335,000 and put it down to $75,000. In that, there was two different projects. One was for the cards, the proxy cards, and that was accidentally removed from the budget of the $20,000. I'm asking if that can be put back in. It doesn't affect the $75,000 that was for the Phase 1, for the, the renovation for Station 1. And during that, I'm asking, during that process, if we can use the building construction fund that was presented to you last commission meeting, that there is money in that building construction fund to support the $20,000 for the software program? And then the $75,000 budget that was reduced on the fire station 1 to up to the upgrades, and we were just doing the gender updates and the basic updates is what they were doing, that two quotes came in, and they're $20,000 more than the $75,000. Again, asking if we can use the building construction fund. If all earmarked money went out of the building construction fund, there would be $90,000 left. Right now, we have a balance of $285,000 in there, because the fact is the other earmarked projects have not been completed or taken out of that budget. But there would be $90,000, and if you approve the 2019 budget amendment for the fire station soft card, there would be $40,000 left. I'd be glad to answer any questions or concerns on either the 18 budget amendment, the encumbrances from 18 to 19, and the 19 budget amendment.
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the budget amendments or the encumbrances? The, the overage on the $75,000?
I can ask Chief Seavock to come up, if he would come up and just to address what the overages on the quote was, to help support it.
President Decker, commissioners, if you recall, our first presentation on the remodel of the downtown station, which hasn't been remodeled since the early 1980s to any significant level at all, was over $300,000. Through the budgeting process, we've, we cut that down initially to $150,000, and then before the budget was finalized, we thought we were safe in coming back down to $75,000 to address basic health concern issues with the building and to address the gender separation issues. We're dealing with a building that was initially constructed in the 1930s, and the biggest expense there is going to be plumbing, and how to get plumbing where and how we need it. Quite honestly, we, we reached out to five area contractors, asking for quotes, we received two. One came in at $99,000, one came in at $95,000, and truly, the phase that we're at right now is a bare bones, anything that could wait has already been called off of it. Fire Marshal Mark Selly is here, he's been the one that's been working on the quote process for us, if, if he needs to come up and address any other questions. It's literally, if, if it can't happen, and I truly understand if it can't happen, we'll take the remodeling off the table, because it won't get us what we need to have done in gender separation or other aspects of what we were trying to accomplish. So again, I ask for your consideration on it. That's the quotes we received. We were surprised at the overage ourselves.
No, I appreciate, you know, clarifying why we're at what we're at, so. Any other questions for Chief Welly? I know the, the force is becoming a lot more diverse, so I, I know this is important, so that we get it done.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Carlson or staff on these amendments?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the 2018 budget amendments and encumbrances.
Second. Motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on the budget amendments and encumbrances.
Thank you.
We'll move right into job descriptions, and we have HR Coordinator Nomenek. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President, commissioners. I have several job descriptions before you tonight. The first one is the design engineer. Job description, this is a new position, it was approved with the 2019 budget. This position is responsible for technical civil engineering and supervisory engineering work, performing a variety of engineering tasks. Work is performed under the managerial direction of the city engineer. This position will be responsible for developing and drafting CIP plans, and will be required to inspect and administer the contracts for CIP projects. We did create this job description, scored it, and it did come out with a score of 850 points, which puts it in Class 4, Grade 6, which is where it was placed in the, in the anticipation with the budget. So, and it is a non-exempt position. Staff is recommending approval if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the design engineer job description.
Motion to approve the design engineer job description?
Second.
With a second. Any further comments or questions for Mrs. Nomenek? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on the design engineer job description. Next item up is a payroll technician.
This also is a new position for us. It was approved with the 2019 budget as a promotional position for the finance department. This position would be responsible for providing a variety of technical duties relating to the city's electronic timekeeping system and payroll processing. Responsibilities would include data, data entry, creating and analyzing payroll reports, meeting federal, state, and local legal requirements, and answering payroll and/or timekeeping inquiries from supervisors, employees, and the public. So really kind of specializing in just payroll. This position was, the job description was scored, it did come out with 550 points, which puts it in Class 3, and that fell right where it was budgeted as well. And city staff recommends approval for this position.
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on the new position for 2019 payroll technician?
Mr. President, move to approve payroll technician?
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion or questions? I, I guess I just have one question. These new positions will be advertised after our approval?
Correct.
Correct, okay. We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on the payroll technician. Next up is accounting budget analysis analyst.
And I will defer to DCA Carlson, I think we're a little contradictory on our title here. The job description does say accounting budget specialist, and then the agenda says analyst or analyst, actually, so I think you would want a specialist?
Yeah, I think we have specialist in our packet.
Okay, so, okay, perfect. So accounting budget specialist, we kind of took the job description for the accounting manager that had been approved in the past, we didn't have anybody in that role currently, it was some time ago since we've had an accounting manager. And this position also was approved for the, with the 2019 budget. So you'll see the redlining on here, and that was taking the manager position to an accounting budget specialist position. This position would be responsible for performing and directing the activities of the entire accounting and budgeting function. Responsibilities would include extracting, compiling, reporting data, ensuring accuracy of data, researching issues, maintaining the city's financial records, reviewing, and making recommendations on city financial policy, developing and presenting financial reports and performing financial analysis. This position may lead some of the lower-level staff in finance and receive general supervision from higher management staff. So with the scoring of this, it did decrease the points to 775 points, and it falls in Class 4, will be a non-exempt position, and did fall in the category that was budgeted for this position, and staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on the accounting budget specialist?
Move to approve accounting budget specialist?
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions for either Mrs. Nomenek or Mrs. Carlson on this position? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up is clerk of court.
This position also was approved with the 2019 budget for a reclassify of the clerk of court position. We currently have someone in this role, we're looking to increase it a grade level. So this position will have additional duties of managing municipal court, will perform technical, clerical, and organizes and directs the work of other staff members, will require a high degree of knowledge of departmental policies and procedures for gathering and dispersing information in the clerk of court office. So some of the things that we added was, the bailiff will now, will report to this person as well, there'll be more HR duties and that type of thing that comes along with managing other staff. So the leadership responsibilities increased, and then we did increase the education portion of it, requiring an associate's degree or a bachelor's degree is preferred. So it did score in at 750 points, and moving it to a Class 3, so city staff does recommend approval for this.
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on this? This is an upgrade in that position?
Correct.
For clerk of court. Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on the clerk of court position.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on the clerk of court position. Last up is the senior fire inspector.
And this also was a position that was approved with the 2019 budget, somewhat similar to the senior firefighter position, where it will be an achievable position. As you can see, there is a list of senior fire inspector classifications that is attached to this job description. So as the, whoever might be in a senior or in a fire inspector role, they would have requirements to meet years of service within the department, education and training component, and then there are a number of emergency management courses that will have to be completed in order to move to this next level. So it's more of a technical-type fire inspector position, they will have, some of the duties will be a little bit more different, a little bit different from the fire inspector, more difficult, or more technical in nature, and this position did score out at 825 points. It falls in a Class 4, Grade 7, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on the senior fire inspector? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve?
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions on the senior fire inspector? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek.
Thank you.
Next up is planning and zoning board appointment, and that'll be handled by City Administrator Gah.
Mr. President, commissioners, over the last couple of meetings, we've reviewed some applications for the planning and zoning vacancy that exists. You, you had some written and, and oral introductions from those candidates last week, and based on that, we're recommending that Troy Bush be appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Gah on this appointment?
Mr. President, I don't have any questions per se, I just would like to thank the candidates that came and provided those introductions. I think it shows transparency when doing important appointments like this, but also gives us an opportunity to meet some potential leaders in the community that haven't had an opportunity to, to join boards like this. So I think it's exciting to have Mr. Bush be a part of exciting to have Mr. Bush be a part of Planning and Zoning. I would make that motion.
Second.
Motion to approve the appointment with a second. The only comment I would make is I do appreciate also everyone that came forward and stepped up for this position. And I know we have some other boards that I think we're going to talk to those individuals and try to see if they'll sit on some of those open positions. Some of them are difficult, but we need...
You've got to remember, this Planning and Zoning Board, that years ago, their meetings were seven and a half, eight hours long.
No. I know.
During the height, you know, seven in the morning till five.
You're not supposed to tell me that.
So we thank those people that have left also.
Yeah. All right. We have a motion to appoint Mr. Bush, and a second. All in favor of appointing Mr. Bush to the Planning and Zoning Committee, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. You will notify Mr. Bush?
Yes.
All right. And now we have an update on the Downtown Square. Mr. Gah?
Yes, thank you, President Decker. Another exciting project tonight, the Downtown Square. This is something that I know a lot of folks are excited about. Last month, we received back the appraisals that we'd been awaiting for on the neighboring buildings that would need to be purchased to expand the Site A for the construction, as had been desired. Those came in just for the building value itself, right around $1 million by the time we prepared the sites, and likely it might take a little bit more to purchase them than that. We estimated it was probably around 1.3, 1.5 million added to the project cost. So with that in hand, we went out to the groups, to the DDA Board, the DID Board, and then the Downtown Task Force, and basically presented three options. Do we purchase the buildings and move forward with Site A as planned in the designs that you've all seen? Likely that would result in a great deal of additional private funding being needed. The second phase, second option was if we liked the site so much, but maybe don't want to purchase the buildings, would we downsize and make it a little bit smaller on the current property that the city owns? And then also, option number three was, or do we move to Site B, which we know is perhaps a little bit bigger than Site A, so we could do everything we want on that? Overwhelmingly, everybody liked the idea of going to Site B. The extra money was concerning. Making Site A smaller was not well-taken by anybody. But also what happened is there was a lot of discussion about, this isn't the only thing we should be doing downtown. We need to really enhance the district, and perhaps something else could be done on Site A. Could that be new construction? Could that be a smaller courtyard of some sort? It was very positive as far as, let's move forward, let's look at Site B, but let's not just look at the Town Square. Let's really grow our downtown. And that was very, very positive and reassuring. So with that, we went to JLG Architects and asked them to provide us some information about what it would cost to do a little bit of work to take the plans from Site A, knowing that they're well-received, and fit those onto Site B, and look at how that could work, and maybe what other opportunities there might be now or in the future for growth on that site. You have in front of you a proposal. That amount is $9,000 just for the design phase. As a reminder, the commission had provided funding to the DID to do this. We did the contract with JLG, and then they were the financial steward of that. There's about $7,000 left there, so we'll need to put a little bit of money if the commission approves the $9,000. And then also, if all of this goes well, and we want to move forward with the actual fundraising design and the materials we'll need for that, that's estimated another $4,500. We haven't necessarily asked to approve that tonight. We could come back after we see the designs and feel like everybody is okay moving ahead with the designs and the site, and then we could talk about the fundraising materials. So at this time, we would ask the commission to consider the $9,000 design phase with JLG.
Mr. Gah, have we, and Mr. Kubis, have we provided JLG with the exact, what we exactly own on those two lots?
That will be part of this process.
Okay.
Going through that, and how does that fit in, and perhaps if we don't own it all, what, how could that fit into the design?
I know there's a little cutout in there that may or may not go to somebody's building. And we just need to clarify where some people have been using on the old city hall, their parking lot, if that's ours or if that's actually...
I believe it's the, if you take the Kovas Dasavas building, immediate from their wall north, so many feet, belongs to the Alex Building. At one time, we were talking about switching that with the Alex Building, so there'd be parking for the Alex tenants. I don't think that got done. So that would be the piece of property that we need to discuss.
And then my concern is too, where the old city hall was, that CenturyLink now parks their vehicles.
Right.
If that is, any of that is their, belongs with their building, or they're just using our property to park vehicles right now?
I hesitate to say that any of it is ours, but we'll find out.
We'll get clarification to them, but any other questions or comments? I'd look for a motion on the $9,000.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move on to the Police Department.
Can I approach you? President Decker and Commissioners, has the idea of negotiating the prices with the building owners been even considered, or maybe trading some properties for the property that we have?
I don't think that was ever...
I've had this discussion, Mr. Marsh. I know a lot of the water is under the bridge already on this project. For consideration, you know, we were talking about, let's not forget completely about that site, about that site. And I know that we own, the first thing that came to my mind was the building for the Domestic Balance Rape Crisis Center. The city will have that, you know, is what I'm talking about. If that is something they, we felt that would be a good trade, where we could trade them that building for their buildings, but I don't, with the value of the three of their buildings of earth, I don't know if that would work.
That's the first I've ever heard of this, so...
Yeah, yeah, first I heard of it yesterday when we, we just ran into each other, Bernie and I, and...
Or, you know, just to negotiate the purchase price would be another option, I guess.
Mr. Marsh, I can just give you a little bit of background from the conversations that I've been in. I know that there were some concerns in regards to security with the proximity to Villard, and I know that a lot of the conversations that were had talked about the spur of economic development in a different area of downtown, and with the expansion of the library, and it running right into that with the bank redoing their facility and some potential for parking there. So I think there's just been a lot of working parts, and I don't know that necessarily Site B is a for-sure thing right now, but I think we're just trying to do our due diligence to see both properties.
Well, I know you guys voted twice that I've been at meetings that this is, Site A was the site you guys wanted, and I know the task force has recommended that site. So sometimes it seems that you guys, even though you consider that to be the prime site, you're trying to find excuses not to put it there.
Well, Site A was selected contingent upon the...
Appraisals.
And so...
You know, I have no idea what they came in at, and I have, nobody's talked to me since October about those buildings, so...
And the task force did meet, again. And as a collective unit, I think everyone was comfortable with continuing to look at Site B as a viable option.
Were the property owners not provided with the appraisals?
They haven't yet. We wanted to wait till we get through this meeting.
Okay.
Waited till when?
He said till we got through this meeting.
You can pick it up tomorrow.
All right. Well, thank you for listening to me, and maybe there's other options there besides just what the appraisals came in at.
We want to look at all options.
Thank you for being patient.
This is Bernie.
Did you want to participate in the cost of those appraisals?
I said I would participate if you bought my building.
Thank you.
All right. Next item up is the Police Department. They have some surplus vehicles.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. The Dickens Police Department is requesting the approval for six vehicles to be declared a surplus property. These vehicles will be sold to the highest bidder following a properly advertised sealed bid process. The vehicles consist of a 2004 Chevy Blazer, 2014 Ford Explorer, 2013 Dodge Charger, two 2009 Crown Victorias, and a 2013 Ford Explorer. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Chief Dossinger? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on the surplus vehicles.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve the sale of the surplus vehicles?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions for Chief Dossinger? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Get them off the lot.
Have to unshovel them right now.
Wait for spring. All right. Next item up is Engineering. We have Lift Station bid.
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioners. Typically, we like to have these bids in front of you with your, for your consideration to approve. This bid opening didn't quite go that way. We had a bid opening for Lift Station One improvements, and we received two bids from electrical contractors. And just background on these vertical structures, we need to bid them out with three bid packages, one for an electrical bid package, one for a mechanical, and one for a general contractor. While we received what we felt were two responsible bids for electrical work, we received no bids for the mechanical or for the general. After reviewing our options with our consultant, we felt the best way in the city's interest to move forward was to reject the two bids for the electrical work. I think you have a summary in your packet of the discussions we had at the meeting, and then some discussions after the bid opening. I shouldn't say the meeting, but the bid opening. The way we intend to move forward is to revise the completion date of the project. So we talked to a lot of the prospective bidders, people who had pulled plans on this bid and never submitted a bid. And there was varying reasons why they didn't. The project was too small, it didn't fit their timeframe, it didn't fit their workforce. We felt the best appropriate change to make to the project was just to extend the completion date of the project. And right now, we'd bid out the electrical work with the completion date of this fall. If we changed the completion date for the rest of the project to the spring, you can see the conflicts we would have between our electrical contractor, working towards an early completion date, and the other two contractors, working towards a later completion date. So we felt it was in our best interest to reject these two responsible bids and rebid the entire package again with electrical, mechanical, and general. So that would be the staff's recommendation to reject the two bids.
Thank you, Mr. Kubis. Mr. Murtha, there are, by rejecting the two bids, we don't, we're not setting ourselves up for any...
Absolutely not. It is actually an exceptionally reasonable and prudent way to approach the issue.
All right. Thank you. And look, is there any questions, comments for Mr. Kubis on the suggestion that we reject the bids on Lift Station One? Hearing no questions or concerns, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve?
We have a motion to approve the rejection of the bids for Lift Station One.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on Lift Station One, the rejection of the electrical bids. Mr. Kubis, you have a report.
Yes, thank you, President Decker. The report would be on potentially moving forward with an update to our transportation master plan, and also potentially the comprehensive plan. For those of you that were on the council, on the commission, when we went through those plans, they both started in 2011, and really the seed money for those plans were a DOT planning grant in 2011 that kicked off the long-range transportation plan for the city of Dickinson. And that kind of spawned the roadmap 2035, the comp plan for the city. Those planning funds have again become available. They're not necessarily on a competitive grant schedule like some other DOT funds. They like to spread those dollars around to the major communities in North Dakota. And back in 2017, staff had written a letter to the DOT inquiring on the availability of those funds. They were available, contingent on some other cities doing some other things. I don't know all the details, but just recently, in the last month, the DOT has approached me again, saying these funds are absolutely available, and we were expecting Dickinson to be on board for utilizing these funds. If not, we need to deobligate the funds and use them elsewhere. They're, you know, they're federal funds, so it's kind of use it or lose it money. The dollar breakdown for this, and then I'll get into some budgeting dollars, but for the, I got a quote from the firm who had done the long-range transportation plan for us back in '11, '12, '13. To do that update, they estimated that that cost would be $180,000. That would be a total project cost. Cities' dollars would be 20% of that for $36,000 city share. They also mentioned that to do the other components of the comp plan update, the land use planning, recreational, things like that, housing, that the DOT wouldn't participate in, would be $50,000. So we certainly don't have to combine the two. It's just, they were both completed in '13, you know, they're five, six years out now from being completed. Lots of change in both the traffic and in the, in the overall comp plan of the city. So that would be a total of $86,000 local share. Some budgeting numbers, in our contracted labor, we had budgeted $120,000 for contracted labor, and this was written in as a line item that we would include some dollars, some matching dollars, for this transportation plan. We didn't have a real solid number back last summer when we were budgeting. Now we do, and I believe with the dollars that Ms. Carlson has encumbered for engineering contracted labor, we'd be able to, not only do the stormwater code update that we had talked about, we talked about a smaller, more focused master plan on some land north of the interstate with NDSU and Dickinson Public Schools, we could accomplish both of those, and this transportation master plan, and a comp plan update with the budgeted amount of contract labor that we have. So we don't necessarily need a motion on this right now, but the DOT, if the commission was interested, would like us to send a scope of work and a fee to them, so they can sit down and go through that with the Federal Highway Administration, make sure it's how they want to spend their dollars as well. So if you would like me to proceed with that, I can certainly do that. Again, this would just be a discussion on the $36,000 for the long-range transportation plan, which again could spawn into an update to the comprehensive plan.
I think it would be a great benefit to the city to get this updated, so...
Mr. President, Mr. Kubis, so it would be $86,000 total in local share for updating the enti-
the entire roadmap?
The, yeah. The roadmap, essentially, most people look at the big, thick comprehensive plan. There's a smaller document that is the long-range transportation plan, because the DOT wants to make a clear divide between the dollars that they had given to Dickinson for transportation. So there's a separate document, and the comp plan kind of became a spin-off of that. There's a section in transportation in the comp plan, but the transportation plan is its own document too. But 86 would, would get both of those plans updated.
I think that would be a wise investment, considering how useful it's been just in the past few years.
Like I said, with the encumbrances that Ms. Carlson spoke about earlier, I believe we'd have the funds to do both those, call them, comp plan updates and some stormwater work that we were budgeting to do, and some master plan work on that piece of ground north of the interstate.
I would say you proceed. I think everyone's in agreement here that we move forward with this.
We will do that. Thank you.
All right, next item up is building and code enforcement, and we have our 2018 annual report.
Mr. President, commissioners, what you have before you is the end-of-year report. It was a pretty good year for us on the single-family structures. We were one behind of last year, although the evaluation values were actually a 9% increase compared to last year. We were down on the commercial permits, thus the valuation was also lower. Alterations, overall, we had a increase on the commercial side, public structures and single-family. With that, again, we had a pretty good increase as far as valuation for alterations. In the packet, actually, it's a pretty lengthy packet that, I think there was over 60 pages that you have, so you can spend some time going through that. I just want to do a quick shout-out to our IT. With the program that he actually puts out there, that's how we're able to pull those numbers quite easily. So definitely want to give a shout-out to IT. The following charts are our permits, the numbers of our permits that actually go out. With the building and with our cold temperatures, we are a little bit lower in some of the areas, but we definitely, as the weather warms up, we will pick up on those actual inspections. Sign permits are up, and I'm not sure if it's just getting it out there that we do have a sign permit that you have to acquire. We did have some issues with signs just going up, people not aware that you actually needed to acquire a permit for that. I think just getting it out, and the new companies that actually are coming to town are calling into the office and getting that prior to establishing or starting work. Fees remitted to the city are lower. The majority of that cost is water and sewer connections. When you actually go through those charts, the building department collects the fees for water, sewer hookups, sidewalks, and other engineering and projects. Both departments are right there in the same office, but a lot of fees that are generated with the permit are collected at that time. With that, also, just to give you an idea, which wasn't in there, our office actually took in over 4,500 inbound calls last year. And just to give you an idea, the volume of calls that we do get in, and we're definitely a public service, and we want to make sure that that's out, that we're here to serve the public, and we want to do a good job with that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schwinn. I just have one question. On some of these slides, they're, we basically haven't collected anything in years. Are some of them, we just, are they old fees that we used to collect and we have stopped collecting, like say sprinklers, sprinkler permits?
Sprinkler permits, it is on the chart, and it's another thing, getting it out there. How many people will put in a sprinkler system on a weekend? And we should have it in our fee schedule. There's code issues when you're actually hooking one up. There's a certain way to do it. You can do it wrong. We want people to get those permits. Moving permits are low. Demo permits are low. Putting up a new deck or replacing a deck, a lot of people, it's a weekend project, don't realize that to replace your deck off your house, you should get a, you need to get a building permit for that.
Okay. Thank you for this update. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Thank you again. All right, we'll move into agenda item 10, public issues of city concern, not on the agenda. If there's anyone from the public that has any concern, that is not on our agenda, that concerns the city, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concern. Seeing there is no one from the public with any concerns, I'd move on to commission. Commissioners, do you have any items you wish to discuss that were not on the agenda this evening? See, there are no issues from commissioners. I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned.